Welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting for Tuesday, June 24, 2014. The agenda for tonight is a call to order, questions from the public regarding items not on the agenda, and we're going to do a little swap here. The next item is going to be the appointment of the police patrolman. Then we'll do reserve fund transfers, both inter- and intra-department ones. We'll have a report from Harvard Development Committee. We'll have a discussion and vote on the proposed policies, drug and alcohol, workplace violence, employee code of conduct, and the visitor business code of conduct. We'll then have a discussion for liquor license fees. We'll have a discussion for the sewer consolidation agreement. Brief discussion on goals and objectives. We have a bunch of appointments to do. Selectmen and Town Administrator reports, and then we will adjourn to executive session for two real estate matters, which we'll read that at the time. So with that, we'll begin. Does anyone have anything that's not on the agenda? Otherwise, we'll turn it over to Chief Perino.
Good evening.
Evening.
You've been advised that our Police Department has recently concluded the background evaluations about two patrolman vacancies. For Wednesday night's meeting, I informed you that I just received a notice that Detective McGinnis would be retiring on August 31, 2014. This retirement will create a third vacancy. Since becoming the Police Chief, I've attempted to keep the department fully staffed. As you know, it takes a full year to go through the process of hiring and training a police officer. As a result, I recommend Ashley Mills, Brian Norton, and Matthew Shinney, all tied for the number one spot on the civil service list, to fill the three vacancies for patrolmen. Ashley, Brian, and Matthew demonstrated through the interview process their desire to give back to the community of Hingham and wanted to have their careers as Hingham police officers. Ashley, Brian, and Matthew all have been to the Special Police Officers Academy preparing for this opportunity. So I'm requesting that you appoint all three.
Thank you, Chief. Paul, further discussion?
I just, I intend to vote for all three of you, but I just want to say that I think that this is probably one of the most important positions of the town because you carry a gun and a badge, and the responsibility is immense. So if you draw the midnight to eight shift, don't see it as a bad thing because the Chief and I served on that shift for a number of years, and it's a, I, maybe I'm a little biased, but I just think that the bond of the patrolmen that worked that shift is a strong one, and it endures. So, good luck.
Paul?
Thank you. And hello again. I just want to, obviously, this would be my first vote on these type of appointments, and I would view this as probably one of the most important votes in terms of hiring that I would have on my position. And I told the Chief after the interviews that I was very impressed with all three of you. I was happy to, in a sense, for your sake, that there was another retirement because I did like all three, and I wish you luck with the academy.
I too want to congratulate all three of you, and believe it or not, like Paul, my first vote as a selectman was to appoint police officers. So it is really the most important thing we do, and I just remind you all, you join a great fraternity of men and women. And the burden you also carry now is you have to live your private life just as you do your very public life. But I congratulate all of you, and this is wonderful, and I congratulate the Chief.
Thank you.
Good pecks, all of you. So, with that...
It's good being number one, huh?
Which of the Pauls would like to make the motion?
I would.
Okay. I'll lend it, you don't have to dig it out, this one?
It's a long one.
I know.
That's why I got the glasses on, Mike.
And he's got the right glasses, right?
That's right. I'll move that we vote to extend a conditional offer of employment to Ashley Mills, Brian Norton, and Matthew Shinney as permanent police officers for the town of Hingham. This offer is contingent upon the successful passing of all required medical and psychological screening examinations and all other requirements related to, but not necessarily limited to, the following: A, successful passing of the required medical examination; B, successful passing of the required physical abilities test; C, successful passing of the required psychological screening process; D, successful passing of all other requirements for entrance into the police academy; E, entering into a satisfactory agreement with the town relative to payment of up to $3,000 recruit training fee; F, successful completion of the police academy as determined by the Police Chief; and G, any and all other requirements as mandated by law or regulation. Should the candidates fail to successfully complete all of these conditions as determined in the sole discretion of the town, then this conditional appointment shall be considered null and void, and to the extent necessary, any offer of employment shall be considered rescinded. I think that's it. It should be enough.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Congratulations. Now you can breathe. Okay, now you all can stop holding your breath.
Matthew Shinney's sister works for the Fire Department.
And if nobody could hear that, Matthew Shinney's sister is Caitlin Shinney, firefighter, paramedic. So we continue the tradition of having families, split families, one in the police force and one in the fire department. Awesome. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Chief? You guys don't have to sit, you of course can stay for the budget stuff.
Welcome aboard.
Congratulations.
Welcome.
Congratulations. Welcome. Congratulations. You're awesome. Congratulations.
That's nice.
Sarah?
It's always a good moment.
Congratulations, I haven't seen you. I said congratulations, I haven't seen you.
I wish it was all as pleasurable as that.
Oh, Sarah. I'm good, Sarah. Oh yeah, don't lose that.
Sorry about that.
Okay. All right, now for the, a little more mundane but necessary. Ted, you want to take this, the reserve fund transfers?
Sure.
Since they will go from here, next door to the Advisory Committee.
Who are diligently waiting for you to finish your business.
Or, as I recall when I was there, impatiently waiting.
Okay, so I think as an overview, the reserve fund was supplemented at town meeting and will be appropriating essentially the balance in its entirety of the reserve fund and then a series of, we're recommending that to you, and then a series of interdepartment transfers where we move money between individual departments and within existing departments. So the first one is a transfer in the amount of $430,847 for snow and ice, and this is to erase the deficit that we incurred last year. And this is a pretty standard practice for us at the close of the year. We've budgeted for this accordingly.
How much did we totally spend on snow and ice?
I don't have the exact number with me, but I can tell you. As a town accountant and a DPW director in the audience...
Sue, why don't you join us?
Did you bring your budget with you? I was going to go in and get that.
She always is prepared.
All right.
Well, the original budget was 504. We're asking for 430 more, so 935,000.
Correct. There is a summary sheet on the front that shows you the original budget. I think, Irma, you'd asked us to prepare that, so we can look through that and see. It's a separate attachment.
Okay.
If you'd like.
You don't have it in the package.
Okay. Any questions?
That one, that one should be, any questions from the audience? Randy, do you want more snow this year?
No.
Paul G., you want to make the, with no more questions, do you want to make the...
Sure.
Why don't we vote these as we do them, because then we'll never remember them.
To move to recommend a transfer from the reserve fund to the snow and ice account in the amount of $430,847.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Betty Foley is managing the dollars in the legal services budget. The request is for 70,000, and I'll let her speak to that for you.
Attached to the request, you'll see a history of where our legal expenses have been for the past several years. Last year, we spent 293,000. This year through May, we're at 267,000. The legal expenses have been trending down for the past several years, and that's with the new way of assigning counsel to specialties and having them get approval ahead of time. Anything over $5,000, as you know, comes back to you for approval if they want to go above that amount. I have asked for 70,000 because there are several things that need to be closed out during the month of June that may run into extra expense. We have several permitting and land use issues that are facing the town.
So will the 70 cover all services rendered through the month of June?
Yes, it will.
I had asked Ted at, sometime in July, we'll put an agenda item to review legal, because even though it's been trending about equal for the last three or four years, when you take a broader look over the last several years, it's still going up. So, good job. Questions? Paul G.?
No.
Paul H.?
No. I'll make a motion, though.
Well, let's see if any, does anybody in the audience have any questions? Okay, then, you can make a motion.
I'll recommend that we vote to transfer from the reserve fund to the legal services account in the amount of 70,000.
You have a second.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
The next one is a $4,400 transfer to Veterans Services. This is to cover the Veterans Agent's buyout accruals before he got called up to military service.
Any questions? This one's pretty straightforward. Mr. G., you want to do, or any questions from the audience?
So I'll move to recommend a transfer from the reserve fund to the Veterans Salaries account in the amount of $4,400.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Okay.
The next one is a transfer of $15,000 to, oh, I'm sorry, it's an interdepartment transfer coming from group insurance and going to the Town Accountant IT Department, and it is for the website consultant that we hired in January.
No questions.
No questions? Paul G.?
No.
Any from the audience? Okay, I'll take a motion.
I'll recommend, I'll move that we recommend an interdepartment transfer to the Accounting IT Website Consulting account from the Group Insurance account in the amount of 15,000.
You have a second.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
The next transfer is in the amount of $3,809. It's an interdepartment transfer from Group Insurance to the Town Accountant salaries line item, and it is to cover the salary for new contracts and for an unbudgeted position, our mail carrier that we added midway through last budget cycle. We've budgeted it for the coming fiscal year.
Questions? Paul?
No.
Anything from the audience? Okay, I'll take a motion.
Motion to recommend an interdepartment transfer to the Accounting Salaries account from the Group Insurance account in the amount of $3,809.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Okay.
The next one is an interdepartment transfer in the amount of $15,000 transferred from Group Insurance to Selectmen's salaries, and the reason for the transfer is the Town Administrator earned a performance award, and this amount is not part of the annual budget process.
Questions?
None.
Any questions from the audience? Okay, I'll take a motion.
I move that we recommend an interdepartment transfer to the Selectmen's Salaries account from the Group Insurance account in the amount of 15,000.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
The next item is, it's changing your vote total, but it is in this order here, so I don't see it in the vote total.
Which one are you looking?
Well, the next one I have is an amount for $10,000 to be transferred, an interdepartment transfer from Group Insurance to be transferred to 8,000 to Town Hall salaries and 2,000 to Town Hall expenses.
I apologize, I missed putting that on the list, I believe.
Okay. And the reason for the transfer is the lunchroom was included in the Town Hall budget in September of 2013. It was not contemplated when the fiscal '14 budget was requested. Lunch revenue is deposited in the general fund, and these are the salary costs. The salaries are incorporated in the, and expenses in the budget on a go-forward basis. And we also attached a lunch room breakdown. Last time we had this conversation, Selectmen Lauter, you had asked for a total cost analysis, and we've done that, and we can show you that the lunchroom is in fact losing money every year, as we expected. We're diligently trying to make it break even, but we think it'll unlikely be break even.
Now, is that because of the salaries and the benefits?
Salaries, benefits, and not enough volume of people eating at those prices. So it's, you know, from our perspective, it'll be considered an employee benefit and amenity as long as you decide to keep it. I can't characterize it any other way than that. Although we do see a lot of people who are not employees in the room, people from the community that use it from time to time, so a number of people from the senior center come up there.
And you all had heard doing some catering. Has that helped?
A little bit. Betty actually can speak a little bit more authoritatively to it because she's been working with it.
We have not gotten a lot of catering requests. There aren't that many meetings that we normally have a catering function at, so anyone who does have a meeting in Town Hall tries to use the lunchroom as...
We've, you know, been, as sort of culturally, I think, a little frugal in terms of how we have our meetings, and, you know, I know a lot of the towns, if you come to a meeting during the day, you're going to have a full suite of stuff, and we tend not to do that. So culturally, it's difficult to change that, but we have asked employees to try to eat there more often if they want to keep this. But I would have to say that I think we're pretty close to where we're going to be. So if this is something you want, this is the price of it.
Is, should we put this on as an agenda item to take a look at, just so we, you know, keep it in the public and for transparency, how much this is costing?
Sure.
Want to do that?
Fine.
Well, good, you wrote the...
Thank you for that.
Why don't we do that for July?
I mean, it is part of the budget, and so we have the funding for next year, but I know that you'll ask me the question at some point in time, and, you know, the answer's going to be...
Thank on it.
Probably the same, is that I don't think it's going to be a profit center.
All right. Then why don't we take a look at it, it's in July?
Just one quick question.
Yes.
Ted, just so I know, maybe it's of interest, it may not be to people in the audience or TV, the interdepartment transfer is that we've talked to, have come from the Group Insurance. Is there a reason why that there, there's an excess or there's, is there something?
When we budget Group Insurance, which is about a $7 million fund, it's virtually impossible for us to peg it exactly to what the rates are, because we set the budget earlier than we know the exact rates. And also, we have transitioned. We have over 1,000 employees, and they shift in the plan, so we can assume that people will stay, but frequently, an employee will move on to their spouse's plan, and we'll have a savings in that account. And we've had it pretty consistently for a number of years, and it's never something we can budget because we just don't know.
Sure. Thank you.
Okay, I'll take a motion.
Sure.
There's no more discussion.
Okay. A move that we recommend a transfer of $10,000 from the Group Insurance account to the Town Hall in the amount of $10,000, 8,000 for salaries, 2,000 for expenses.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Okay, your next transfer is another interdepartment transfer, and this amount is $31,965, and it is from Group Insurance, transferred from Group Insurance to Property and Liability Insurance. Premiums for this year came in significantly higher than in past years due to claims history. We had, actually, we just had one bad year last year, and our rates have gone up. But also, the possession of the new school increases our rates. Every time we build a new building, our rates are based on the value of those buildings.
And since we're talking insurance, I have to give Sue a plug for helping Lincoln School Board of Managers getting insurance for Lincoln School apartments. That's not a trivial undertaking. She's been great.
Thank you.
Any questions?
None.
Do you want to do the motion?
Sure. Move to recommend an interdepartment transfer to the Municipal Building Insurance Property and Liability account from the Group Insurance account in the amount of $31,965.
Second, then.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
The next one is a transfer, interdepartment transfer, $100,000 coming from Group Insurance and going to workers' compensation. Workers' compensation, you know, we had a high volume of claims this year, a couple of unique, maybe not unique is the best word, but just claims. We are self-insured for workers' compensation, so, you know, this year is going to be one of our bad years. We drained our trust fund. Last year, we appropriated the money out of the trust fund after having several years of great experience and built up the balance and used it, and then the following year, we had a bad year. And so we will have to go back to building it up. Overall, we self-insure our workers' compensation. If you go back and look in the file, the record, you'll see that in the early '90s, the town was self-insuring this exact line item, which for us has been running about 250,000 a year. In the '90s, we were paying 440,000 for this in the early '90s, and that was when we made the decision to switch to self-funding. We've really never spent more than 300 in a year since then. So, you know, while it's a little painful this year, you know, for two decades, we've had great success managing our workers' comp.
Excellent.
Quick question. I, and I did notice the amount, it seems pretty high, obviously, but I make note that you had mentioned before about the numbers have come down. I would like at some point in the next few months to take another look at that process and just see if that's okay, but...
Why don't we, let's add that on the same time we look at the lunchroom. Let's just pick up on a lot of these, so we can do legal, the lunchroom, and workers' comp.
Sure.
Any questions from the audience? I'll take a motion.
All right, then. I'll move that we recommend an interdepartment transfer to the workers' compensation account from the Group Insurance account in the amount of $100,000.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
And the next one is an intradepartment transfer of $2,000, and it's to be transferred from the assessors' expense line items into, two line items, $900 into the salary line item and $1,100 into the revaluation line item. The $900 in the salaries is for a buyout for an employee who separated from the town this year and was entitled to benefits, accrued benefits. We normally don't budget accrued benefits. And revaluation services, there were a larger number of inspections and permits that they had to use their third-party administrator service bureau for.
Questions? Ted, these revale services, this is not what we budgeted for for next year, right?
It is, actually.
But it started this year.
Correct. Actually, it started the year before. So now, when you were Chairman of Advisory, Rick Nowland would be the data collector, and he'd go out and do that with Lane Partridge. What we did is pulled them back, and now they stay in the office, and we've hired a suite of data collectors to go out that are more focused on that, and we've eliminated a position by doing that.
Okay.
No questions? Make a motion?
Yep.
Move to recommend an intradepartment transfer from the assessors' expense account to the assessors' salaries account in the amount of $900 into the assessors' revale account in the amount of $1,100.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
And the next item is $800. It's an intradepartment transfer from treasurer collector expenses, moving to treasurer collector salaries in the amount of $800, and this is for longevity pay. As we changed the treasurer collector from elected to appointed, she became eligible for longevity. That was part of that article and proposal, and this is the cost of it.
Will she be doing a personal contract?
No.
Questions? Cool. Paul?
I'll move that we recommend an intradepartment transfer from the treasurer's expenses account to the treasurer's salaries account in the amount of $800.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Okay.
Your next transfer is another intradepartment transfer within the Department of Public Works, Transfer Landfill Department. $7,239 to be transferred from the trash expense account to the capital account within the same department. And the reason for that is they needed to purchase another closed-top trailer, and when they went to trade it in, both the cost of the new one and the trade-in were higher than the capital outlay allowance.
Questions?
No.
Okay, I'll take a motion.
Move to recommend an intradepartment transfer from the landfill expenses account to the landfill capital outlay account in the amount of $7,239.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and the next item is another intradepartment transfer, again, within the Department of Public Works, in this case, the Sewer Department, and the amount requested is $15,878. And the reason for this transfer is, oh, it's to be transferred from the MWRA assessment account to the SRF intermunicipal agreement with Hall account. The estimated assessment from Hall for fiscal '14 was over the appropriation due to a higher increase in the Hall sewer rate than the commission anticipated.
Has this been built into the budget for next year?
I'm not sure. Randy?
We asked Paul what their increase is likely to be. They gave us a range, and we put it into our base, and this year, we're hoping that they anticipate it.
Thank you. Discussion?
No.
No?
A move that we recommend an intradepartment transfer, intradepartment transfer from the sewer MWRA account to the sewer intermunicipal agreement, Prentz-Hall account in the amount of $15,878.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
And your last transfer for tonight is actually an intradepartment transfer, and it's coming $1,500, and it's moving from bathing beach salaries to bathing beach expenses. And this is sand and grader to grade the bathing beach for this evening.
This would be the regular transfer for sand. You can almost count on this one.
It depends on the storms.
Sometimes it's bigger, sometimes it's smaller. Any questions?
No. I'll make a motion to recommend an intradepartment transfer from bathing beach salaries to expenses in the amount of $1,500.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. It is a lot. Good job, Sue.
Thank you very much.
You don't need him signed right now, right?
I have filled out the information so that you can...
Thank you. Okay. Harbor Development, Alan and Company.
John, you help me. He's all set. Yes.
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 It's everything for Harbor Development, so, John, you can probably stay up there, too.
Yeah, should. Thank you for having us. You've been here for like the last three or four years, isn't it? We're kind of an advisory committee on the Board of Select, and we try to be cognizant of that, because Bob Mosher, who's going around to committees, myself, reminds me, we are a committee with no power and no money. So basically, we have to rely on the kindness of other people, I would say, to get things accomplished. And this, the Selectmen in particular, like in the last year, I noted in my memo that Selectmen Healy and Selectmen Lauter have been with us and help us get traction when we need it, because as a volunteer committee, it's hard for us, you know, we count on you. The DPW and all these committees have been helpful, but they're not directly beholden to us in any way, shape, or form. to us in any way, shape, or form. So, it helps to get things done. I sent a memo out that I believe Betty sent to all of you, so I don't want to reiterate that. I just wanted to touch on a few things today, which is why a number of us are up here. What we've tried to do in the last few years is try to have individual members be like the lead of a certain project. I think it's the most effective way to have a committee work. So, in the case of tonight, I'd like to talk about the Whitney Wharf Bridge, very briefly on the boat ramp, which I know that we're already trying to get the state to work on. The bathhouse, putting out a new RFP for the bathhouse. The erosion issues we're having along many of our seawalls, which is something that selectmen burns raised our attention ever years ago, saying we really should be looking at this as a global issue. And we had a plan done by Coastline Engineering in 2011 that documented that. I think I sent the narrative of that out as an attachment. And I think that's something we really have to big-picture look at. I don't think we can fund it all with town money, but we have to look at that sooner than later. And then, last but not least, though I think we'll talk about it last, is the goose management issue, which always gets a chuckle at times, but it's a very serious issue, as many of us know. We've had some recent success, and John Thomas will speak in some detail of what we hope the selectmen will consider for a broader application this week before what's our busiest week, really, down at the harbor. So, with that, I guess the first thing I'd do is turn over to Bill Riordan, who was the liaison at CPC for us on the Whitney Wharf Bridge and is the committee's lead on Whitney Wharf.
So, I want to give the members a couple things. Paul, you may not have been here, Paul, there's just the summary information for the proposal when it was originally described by the town meeting.
Actually, put it there, and we'll show it to.
And to each of the members, I'm also dropping a memorism of a timetable for the permitting and construction process for this long-term project.
Thank you.
With some commentary that will go with it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Paul, again, I know you were involved in the Whitney Wharf Bridge, but it goes back a long time. Town has been considering the notion of connecting Whitney Wharf to the town pier for an extended period. The other Paul, Irma are all too aware of this, have lived through a couple of town meetings, fought and, you know, tried to make this happen. I think to summarize, 2012, the town threw community preservation group $275,000 to do this project. It's contingent on the need to have an arrangement with the owner of 3 Aotis Street, Mr. Bond, regarding an easement across his property so that the town could build this, the ramp leading up to this bridge structure. That took a long time, I think is the easiest way to say it. And that has caused us to pause this several times, but we finally did accomplish that in the May timeframe. Five agreements actually were signed. Betty shared them with me. Very complex arrangement with Mr. Bond, trying to cover all of the possibilities. So, now, we're ready to move forward. And what I want to do is have the selectmen and those other department heads, although Randy has left, to understand the ball's now in our court, as I see it, us and Beals and Thomas, who are the engineering firm that we, the town, has hired to oversee this project for us. The first steps were to do some borings on both the Whitney Wharf side of the town brook as well as Mr. Bond's property, 3 Aotis, because the bridge structure will be supported by pilings on either side of town brook and then another set right in the middle of town brook. Therefore, we're not putting the weight of the bridge on the walls on either side.
Good.
So, it was important to have a clear understanding of, well, what's, how far down is bedrock? And how far down are these pilings going to have to be driven? That was the first step. And sadly, once again, we were held up because of equipment failures by the boring company, Polaris Engineering. If you take a look at this little time chart, you'll see that originally, Mr. Los from Beals and Thomas had sent us the date that he hoped to have those done on May 23rd. I've noted at the top that that didn't actually occur until June 13th. That's about three weeks, and it's a critical time. I spoke with him last week and asked him, I said, Eric, what can we do to catch up here? Because the target for this long-sought project is to try to have it in operation and ready to go July of 2015, a year from, roughly a year from today. That's an aggressive target, given where we are, given the needs for the permitting, both within the town, at the state level, and even the federal level. Beals and Thomas, you know, know that, and I think they've captured the necessary, you know, permitting steps here. The issue is, where can we try to squeeze some time out to get us back on a schedule that might allow use in the summer of 2015? I spoke with Roger Fernandez yesterday, and he's aware of this schedule. I've sent him a copy as well, want to make sure Ted focuses on this as well. Because what's going to happen is, it's going to be, when it kicks over to the town, then, for example, the next step is going to be preliminary design. We should have that next week. Then, three different groups need to review that. Harbor Development itself, the selectmen, our RFP required that Mark Mazarelli, who was the consultant to the town for the Greater Harbor project, I forgot what it was called, the master plan. So, that the design is consistent with the master plan. All of that needs to happen before it can be then turned back to the engineering firm to do final plans and then into the breach of permitting with the Conservation Commission and others. So, it'll be, you know, another key time is going to be out there after we're permitting. We'll be ready to go. We're going to need to put an RFP together and get it out to competing bidders. We have a sense of, you know, a very good firm who did the bridge at Rolls End, York.
York Bridge.
But clearly, this has to be competitively bid. So, that'll be another time when we're going to need to try, as a town, to move this thing forward, always carefully, but with some due speed in order to get there. So, I'm, as the one-time chairman of the Community Preservation Committee who proposed this, or, you know, with Harbor Development, brought it forward at town meeting. I'm very excited to get started, but I'm wary of our schedule. It's very tight.
How weather-dependent are you going to be? Because I noticed none of the construction is really going to be done during the winter time. Is that on purpose?
It's really a function of backing up. You go from, okay, you've got your permits, got to put out your bids. We're looking for bid, you know, if we were on the original schedule, bid openings in early January. You grant the bid, and then you need a mobilization process by the winning bidder for construction that starts, I think, in April, as I recall.
It's kind of take you about 68 weeks to get files. It's just a lag time to get the material.
Wow.
Yeah.
So, but that, again, that's one of the other things that we'll push back on here. My job, from my perspective, is to just keep the burner under anybody who's got anything to do with it, and that includes the selectmen and ourselves.
One of the recommendations Ken Corson had at our Harbor Development Committee last weekend, it is what the regulators do now, is hopefully, we could have one meeting on the site. I mean, the CONCON is going to issue order conditions, that's step one. But for the DEP Coastal Zone Management, the Army Corps of Engineers, one thing you can do, and it's become more popular, is having one site visit where you can get all those questions out just about the time you're ready to file. So, if there's any questions, you've kind of get them out in the open. You know, you try not to submit it, say, wait for the questions to come back. This timeframe is so tight that we almost don't have room for that, you know? To actually permit this thing in like four or five months is unusual. But one of the things that does get permitted typically is things with public access. For water-dependent uses of public access have high priority with the state. But we have to keep that priority. Our state reps and Senator will have to occasionally do some gentle nudging of regulators to get this thing through.
We can help there.
And that's assuming, I think that schedule almost assumes that.
Do you anticipate any problems getting the Chapter 91 license?
None. And not from an access point of view, it's right up their alley. I mean, Mr. Bond has to provide access anyway, and this is far superior access to what he has around his property. So, this is the way of doing that. So, I think that would be a layup, it's just a matter of, it still takes as long as it takes to get to the process. And like, Army Corps can't give you a permit to the coastal zone management assigned off. There are dominoes. But again, this is the type of project they typically like. And I think Ken's idea is a good one. If we get the people out there and get them in support of it, hopefully, I work for a marine construction company, and we have a robotics submarine company in our place in Quincy, and we got a peer permitted for them in this timeframe. But it was, everything was lined up, you know? So, it's got to go perfectly for this to happen, but it can happen. So.
Bill, it's kind of neat where you started this. I can't even tell many.
We're going to finish it on my watch.
You were the, when I was on advisory after you left, you were like the perennial visitor with the award article of the year. But this will be good to get this finished.
And I think it could be this time next year. I mean, there's no busier.
Amazing.
Week at our harbor than what would happen a year from now, you know?
Anything going to be done to Whitney Wharf with this, or that becomes a separate project?
Separate project.
Project, yeah.
It's going to be large.
I would emphasize in terms of this timeliness that I think there are a lot of people in town who look at community preservation and say, gee, I see these projects approved, but they seem to all, you know, get slowed down. So, that's my sense of urgency, and it comes from both my CPC days and now my Harbor Development days. You know, same could be said of the North Street Light Project, Light, what, Wire and Pole Elimination Project.
The bridge will be done first.
Actually, Joanie Williams mentioned, we're actually going to try to talk about the goose management issue because she has to run, and then John's here as well, and the trustees. Very, very brief introduction, and I'm going to let John speak quickly. The trustees, as Irma knows, because we have at least authority on a small area, the area of, you know, the grass in front of where the farmer's market is, and the grove, as we call it, is under the jurisdiction of the trustees. We've talked about this issue for so long, we decided to do a test case. The Board of Health supported applying this product, so that was the first thing, if they did it. And I'll let John speak. It's been very successful to date, not that expensive, and we have some material to do it. We've got a guy queued up to do some of it tomorrow. We'd like to expand it to include the area all the way to the Iron Horse.
Now, when do you have to have that put on to give us a goose poop-free fireworks night?
He's got a lot of guy lined up for tomorrow.
First off, I left these today with all of you. Did you?
Yes.
See them? This is Chris Murphy, the goose manager. Joan and I met him 8:28, 6:30 in the morning, at the beach property. We stayed there for three hours, and he said, watch those geese. And they did what he said they would do. They start picking at their breast, and they walk away. And it gives them a mild upset, plus it has a UV spectrum that speckles the grass that only the geese can see. So, they associate the upset stomach with the vision of the grass they're looking at. We both went there consistently for two, I went for two weeks, I think you did, too.
John's there every day.
Twice a day. We have not seen a goose on that property since. This comes highly acclaimed by this gentleman who does a lot of treatments of major industrial areas, a lot of them up in the North Shore. He has a watershed area of Chelmsford, and recently, you just found out about.
I talked to a landscaper who has some work for me who does the State Street complex, and they've been using this for three, four years with amazing success. They had a real problem, they started spraying that, that was the deterrent.
So, on the Napa River, that complex?
Yeah, it's on North Quincy. Yeah, exactly. They've been doing it for about three years very successfully.
And the geese probably moved to Hingham.
Who knows where they go? We're certainly not questioning the fact that they moved somewhere. But as Amy Cowan was here with the Friends of Hingham Harbor, and we've heard from the farmer's market, it's a continual nuisance. It really is. It's a real health hazard with it, and it's a deterrent to getting as many people as you want to be down at the harbor.
I spent an hour this afternoon with my wife and two granddaughters at the picnic tables at the beach, and I walked the entire green. All the poop is white and crumbling, which means it's aged and there's nothing fresh there. Now, the question is, how long does this last? It's been almost a month. The town has done at least two mowings, and I know we've had three rainstorms, and the geese still have not gone back there. So, as far as treatment goes, some have said that even one or two during the summer is enough to keep the geese away from an area. But this gentleman is excellent. This is Chris Murphy. If you read what I've given you in the highlights of the product itself and the safety issue of it, and I also gave you a picture of how he does it with his little machine. And it's, to me, it's a first-class operation, and it'll work. It has worked.
How much money do you think we need, John, to do the?
Well, the product costs $275 a gallon, and roughly, a gallon is mixed with 50 gallons of water, and that does an acre or a little over an acre. He said he can get that down to two quarts, depending on the season, depending on the climate, depending on how much rain there has been. So, he can really stretch this product. Manny Sylvester has had this product given to him some time ago, which had aged, and when this stuff gets to be over two years old, it needs to be reconstituted. So, he was, I took it and gave it back to this Chris Murphy. He sent it back to the company and in turn gave us two and a half, or actually, three and a half, because he treated the lawn. So, he just did us this time for $375. We had the product. Now.
$350.
I'm sorry.
$350.
$350. And we still have two and a half gallons, which he says will probably, maybe with a little more, do the whole harbor. So, it'll be his labor, and I assume it's going to be more than $350, but it's reasonable. I can't tell you until he builds this.
And the trustees have some money for our area. So, I mean, I think we're talking the delta, which maybe it's another $300 or something.
Yes, I talked with Ted about that and prepared him the selectmen, if all three of us agree, would kick in money. And Bruce, the Board of Health is fine with us?
Yes.
Yes. He wrote a letter, Joanne has, and he personally called flood control in Delaware, the headquarters, and talked to the head engineer and chemist who are involved in this product, and was quite satisfied with the conversation he had with him.
Super.
He was concerned about the safety issue as anybody is with it, but it's like spraying your lawn with fertilizer in the summertime. You know, he puts the flags out and warns people that this has been doing recently. It dries within a couple of hours, so it's, after that, traffic is normal.
Cool.
The other thing in his favor is, geese have memories of where they have these things. I think that's the reason it's probably been successful with State Street, is they will go somewhere else, or the goslings will become accustomed, oh, Hingham Harbor is where I go. If you get them off of that mode, there's a good chance we can jump this. And then, I think the school department may be interested in this, and I think that the golf course is going to be interested in doing this.
Very interested.
Very interested in that. We had a meeting with Mary and Abby like a few weeks ago about this broader.
I heard that was a very good meeting. Jay McGrail told me.
Abby and Mary had this gentleman down on their own two weeks ago and has asked him to do a complete town survey and come back with some, including maybe finding the nesting eggs out on the islands in the springtime and other avenues to stop the overall process. But as he said to me on the morning that Joan and I watched him do this, the goslings at that time were the teeny little things out there when we were there. He said, as soon as they've been brought here by the adults, they were imprinted. Mother Nature, they've been imprinted by where their parents brought them. Now, they're the next generation for next year. If we spray and can keep this successful, then we'll have them back.
Super. Let me open it up to questions as far as we've gotten, especially since John has to leave.
With respect to geese, when you say safety, are you referring to safety of humans? Or, I mean, I'm thinking about kids, and they run around on the grass, and they okay with that, or?
It's safe to humans, pets, animals. I didn't bring that page with me, but it's quite a thorough write-up by the chemical company that makes this, and DuPont, actually. And it's like using lawn spray fertilizer on your lawn in that sense. But it does, it has these elements in it that affect the geese and their digestive system, and the ultraviolet that affects their vision.
I would actually say it's much more specific than that in the sense it's really just designed, whereas arguably, what is on the. as not, whereas arguably what is on lawn spray could have broader implications than I think this would, quite honestly. Because this is just targeted at, really, that one animal.
Paul, we've been talking about this literally since I became a selectman, and I know you all have talked about it before. And one of the reasons we didn't go forward sooner was the concern, but now that the Board of Health and Abby and company have signed off on it.
Do you have to use more of it as you progress in years?
Hopefully less.
Once you've had the initial treatment at full strength, I have the impression from this gentleman, again, depending on rain, depending on weather, he can dilute it down. He can go from a gallon to two quarts per acre, which cuts the cost of the product in half, basically.
Is this-
And again, it's all contingent upon weather and mowings, but we've had enough history here in a month's time, and it still appears to be working.
Do you need that machine to apply it, or can we just-
I'd be awfully high pressed about this machine. I don't think it shows in this picture, but this, he has two lawns that come out, and it's spread about six or eight feet wide. And he just goes up and down, up and down, up and down. He did the whole area in less than an hour with that machine. To do it by hand or otherwise, I couldn't imagine trying to do that.
And at some point, if this really works for the long term, Randy could train somebody to do it, and we could do it here. But hopefully, the geese will go away permanently.
He has people that are trained, but he does not have the machine to do it, and the machine that's really-
Social Country Club does.
Oh, they have the machine?
They have the machine.
That's how he handles his greens. And he is inundated over there. He's got people complaining to him constantly about the geese on the greens. But he does have something very similar to this, and it's a town machine. That's my mistake.
Yeah, he hasn't used it for the goose application, but he's got a similar thing for, you know, fertilizing the white.
And then watering, I'm sure.
Yeah.
What are you looking for? What about questions for Alan? Well, Paul, you first.
I don't have any questions.
And what about questions for Alan and Bill on the bridge?
I have a couple. Is there a setback that triggers the state and federal permitting on the waterfront?
What do you mean by setback, Paul?
Well, just, within, I take it that because it's built right on the waterfront, you've got to get a state permit and some kind of federal permit from the Army Corps?
Because it's in quasi-navigable waters, or it's Commonwealth tidelands.
Does it, so any of the dry land, so to speak, the upland is not subject to any kind of state or federal permitting?
Order of conditions with Conservation Commission handles that.
That's it?
And that gets CC to Department of DEP. So DEP can comment on it. I don't see what they will. It's already been built upon disturbed area, if you will.
Well, the reason I ask that, Alan, is because I was looking at the survey of the seawalls-
Yeah.
-which I really appreciate you doing. And it seems like a lot of them are in poor condition, and they really do need to be-
They are.
So my question is, if the seawalls are going to be rehabbed, if you will, or just strengthened or replaced in some way, does that require state and federal permitting?
The important thing to understand, Paul, is that for construction purposes, we don't want to have the bridge be dependent on the seawalls.
It's a broader question, Bill.
Yes, I can see walls overall, like, especially like the mobile site, for example.
Yes.
Is this, by the way.
Yes.
This is a good picture. I don't know if that will show up on the screen, but-
And Barnes Two.
Yeah, and really, if you walk them, they're in deplorable condition.
Terrible shape.
And the best time to see our waterfront is at high tide and peak low tide. And there's nothing more telling than seeing those two conditions, especially on a moon tide, high and low. You'll see how high the water gets, you know, especially if we have any fetch across the harbor. And at really low tide, you see how bad the boat ramp is and other things, you know, at their worst. And that, we just had, Bill and I, both on the Foss Committee, as you're aware, and we're talking about that and saying, "Well, we've got an issue about the wall that supports that land." You know, it's one thing to think about a memorial, but we have to think about its sustainability.
That's my question in terms of federal, state permitting?
There are already licensed structures, which is good news, and all you're doing is modifying them. So it's probably a modification of an existing license. But I think what we'd want to do, in fact, one of the things on my checklist, is I don't know where we could come up with some funding, or the selectmen could. I think if we had something like $25,000 to $30,000 worth of funding, we could research all the historical permits along this area, do some rudimentary engineering to match that study we sent you, the Coastline Engineering did, and have almost separate projects, and look at the mobile site, for example, and say, "Okay, the bulkhead was built in 1894", whenever it was, and it's mass-licensed, blah, blah, blah. And the Army Corps licensed it a certain date. That is the biggest thing in re-permitting those things. If there are already licensed structures, which I'm fairly certain they are, it's far easier to permit those type of structures if you're just modifying them, raising elevation of granite, for example, or resetting some stones.
What type of person would do that, if we could get the money?
Probably a, somebody with either, an engineering firm like a Bills and Thomas would typically have somebody, or Polaris, any of these firms, Coastline Engineering, would have somebody who's very proficient at going to DEP on Winchester Street, One Winchester Street. Their documents are pretty good, you know, in doing that. But they know what they're looking for. I mean, you could have somebody who's good at reading records, but you want an engineer to understand, "Yeah, this is the wall that I'm looking at today." Because it's quite possible, you might have something in 1850 that was replaced in 1910, and we're going to be modifying the 1910 wall. So that's kind of why you need somebody who kind of knows what they're looking for. But again, it's not rocket science. I mean, somebody good can go to DEP in a day and probably find the permits we're talking about. Now, doing some rudimentary engineering is going to take a little time.
Could they do the whole harbor, all, including Barnes One and Barnes Two?
Yeah, you could go to Town Pier. I mean, I think all those should probably be looked at.
Can you all write a letter to the selectmen requesting money? And if you do have a good guess at the amount, or reasonable?
Sure.
That's squishier, but, you know, but you have a sense from-
I could ask a few consultants, too. I mean, I know enough people we work with, and I work with professionally, could say, "Look, if this is the scope, what do you think it would be?" And we'd obviously have to put an RFP out, but have an idea of what that would be worth.
With respect to the borings, are you finding anything that you didn't expect?
No. Happily, I spoke to Mike Clark from Polaris, and they said they found bedrock where they expected to find bedrock, and that simply means they're not going to have to go deeper than they thought in order to get to something solid. That occurred at World's End, for example. They found out that it was squishier, and they had to go a lot longer. You've got to know how long those pilings are going to be before you bring material to drive them.
Are you going to pin them, Alan?
What's that?
You're going to pin them to the bedrock, is that?
Yeah, that's the idea. You drive them to refusal, which isn't as far down. It wasn't all that bad.
Twelve, thirteen feet?
Twelve, thirteen feet. It really wasn't that bad. So.
And Paul, just to relay your fears on the seawall, if you stand in the Veterans Park side and look at Whitney Wharf, you'll notice that it's at least two granite levels higher than anything else in the harbor.
That's my next question.
As is the wall directly behind the coffee shop, from where the bridge will be. So I feel the bridge will be at a higher level, that whatever we have to do in the future to rebuild our seawalls, the bridge will be fine, just as where it is and at the height it's at.
I think actually the best wall that Nick Vaughn has is the wall we're coming up, ironically, is the wall we come to.
Although I, I'll reread it again, but I was a little surprised at the condition of the walls on Whitney Wharf. I thought they were going to be in better condition than they're evaluated as.
Yeah, no.
No, the elevation's right, but they could use some, and some of that may be just moving them, more stabilization. I mean, you know, that's what I'm saying. It'd be nice if we could go out and look at some of these as individual projects, so we could go along the harbor. If we could get these, so we had, it's almost like what the trustees have done. We've had some engineering, we got from town meeting to study the beach stabilization, but at least now we have the engineering. We're hoping we can actually go to Coastal Zone Management and request maybe a grant to do some of that. But really, some of these other areas, we don't have enough engineering to submit a cohesive application.
You need more detail.
Exactly. So if we went back to, "This is the structure we're talking about. It was permitted in 1910," you know, "And we have to raise it four feet, and we have to reset these stones." So if you had that type of thing, that's something you can go after.
Does, not to monopolize you, but-
No, that's, this is important, because the seawalls are in awful shape.
Does what's going on on the land side of the seawall impact the kind of work that has to be done on the seawall itself with respect to stabilizing it or bringing it up to an acceptable engineering level of stability?
Somewhat. You're probably going to set these from the land in a perfect world. I mean, you don't want to, because of the harbor, you know, the tidal fluctuation, can't do this from water. So again, better sooner than later. You take the mobile site as an example. You don't want to get the, a big piece of equipment, a crane or something like that, particularly close to the edge of that property, because there's not much holding it up. Again, a better sooner than later example. So the others are, Whitney, I think, is stable enough. It's just a matter of, some of the stones have shifted. I think that's a remedial job. You've got enough stones.
We also know it's there.
It's there, right.
And what's likely to be there.
Correct.
I think that's the key word, likely.
Right.
Now, if you do the pre-engineering work and the pre-investigation work, does that set us up in a better position the next time the governor releases funds for the seawalls? I was kind of disappointed we didn't get anything in this first round.
No, it should. I mean, unfortunately, it's like, I guess I'd call ourselves a harbor town versus an ocean town. It seems like Marshfield and Sitewatt and those communities seem to do better than us in getting money. And clearly, they have greater coastal storm effects than we do.
They suffer more, though.
They suffer more. But this is a real effect. I think the one thing we should be able to hit the state about, I mean, for example, this is the seawall, which isn't that bad, but by the rotary. We're talking about a major rotary. We're talking about a road that carries 25,000 cars a day, which should be important to the state, that essentially this water is, our shoreline is protecting that, you know? So that's something they should be looking at in the next 20 years.
For anybody that hasn't done it, to Alan's point, and I guess John is the one that found out this road actually has a name, at Mean Low Tide, the road out to Barnes Two. When the tide goes out, the road that's like on the beach, or on the-
The roadway that used to go up to Steamboat.
To Steamboat, right.
It chose as an actual road.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Well, there's a paved path.
Yeah.
Almost a road. It's almost wide enough to be a road. I didn't know it had a name.
I thought you had a map that showed a name. I thought you did.
Oh, you know, those are the old maps that I dug up when I was looking on the history. I had forgotten it.
And if anybody wants to take a walk at low tide, just remember to come back, because the tide does come in. You can walk along, and you can see how bad our seawalls are. And it really, it's a pretty walk, but it, you can see, we need work.
Yeah.
I have an additional question. When you get a chance.
Just a quick question. In terms of the, if the funding was available, I know you said you wanted to do a project by project, but generally speaking, how long would that take? Is there any idea, or?
How long would it take to do some of the jobs, you mean, or?
No, 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 no. How long would it take to do the evaluation that you've done?
Oh, I don't think it would be more than a three to six-month period. I mean, the thing that I'm talking about is, it's resetting stones, it's raising elevations, the permitting information they should be able to get in a short period of time. I mean, Whitney Wharf was more involved because of the fact it's a totally new structure that's being supported on new piles. Everything we're talking about is modifying the existing licensed structure. So I don't think the engineering is any near as complex. So I think three to six months is more than enough time.
Well, Whitney Wharf had been an industrial site as well, or a commercial site. So you were transitioning, and you had issues. We had fuel, fuel tank issues that had to be resolved, and-
Right.
A lot of other complexities on Whitney Wharf.
Yeah.
Very good. One else?
A quick question. If the channels in the harbor are altered, or expanded, or added to, would that impact the decisions that are made with respect to the seawalls?
I missed part of that call, I'm sorry.
If the channels in the harbor were added to or expanded in any way, would that alter what is done to the seawalls?
Oh, if we dredge, you mean, it had more dredging?
More dredging, added additional?
I don't, it would be minuscule, I think, no.
I mean, surely Ken may know more on this, but if it was done, I'm sure it would be done out away from the seawalls. You mean like to enlarge the boat basin?
I'm just asking.
Yeah, you'd have to, no.
More capacity for all of them.
They don't come within, they don't come within 30 feet of the wall.
Yeah, I don't see, if we were to dredge in near harbor, I don't see that they would be dredging closer to the wharves at all because of conservation regulations. So if we were to dredge, we'd be dredging in the outer part of the harbor.
I can pass this one.
Do you want to see if we can-
Paul, it does have a dredge area on it. You can kind of see what the dredge area is, and it's a pretty decent distance from any seawalls.
And we can try and put that on there?
Yeah. I tried to get a smaller version, but my printer walked out today. I was hoping to have an 11 by 17, but.
Now, the drawing of the bridge that we put up, is that a current one, or that's the one out of the existing harbor plan?
No, that's the one that was done by Mark Mascherino.
Okay.
So it's pretty close to what it'll probably be.
That's the intent, Irma, and that they are still looking at roughly that location for the bridge?
That was really my question.
The only other thing I had, other than Johnny reminding, we would like a vote on the goose issue, is the boat ramp, which I know that I think Ted has started to work with the state on the design. Again, that's kind of a squeaky wheel gets degrees type of thing. And I've got some pictures in the back. Oh, actually, I have some.
I also have this.
I have a small one. I'm going to pass those along. There's actually pictures of how bad some of the walls are, for starters. The parking lot by the Bathing Beach, we're doing the replacement. But down the bottom, you'll see two pictures of our boat ramp.
Oh, the rebar. I remember seeing that.
And then the sand and how bad it is at low tide, is that about right? And then the other pictures of the one in Falmouth, that the state, in Falmouth, in Yarmouth, rather, the state did, I haven't got a map. A beautiful dock, beautiful ramp, and that's the type of thing that they build. And the nice thing about the state program is they're going to fund the engineering and 100% fund the, and quite possibly a parking lot, right, Kenny? You know, so.
The parking lot, too?
Yes, correct. They want more, a little more trailer parking.
So one of the requirements for our state boat ramp is they need-
We're going to get that.
...parking spots for cars and trailers, so they are going to be looking at our current layout for the framework of the parking lot, recommending a, or recommend a new parking layout, striking.
Excuse me.
More parking spots for cars and trailers.
Within the existing footprint?
Within the existing footprint.
Now, will they be, take care of some of the erosion and all the things we were thinking about doing to that parking lot?
They would recap it, right?
Oh, no, it's not the bathing beach.
Right. But this one, would they do?
Yeah, they would do whatever was necessary to repay that.
And they would pay for it?
Correct. Because it's where they park trailers.
Okay.
And the state does look at this as an integral ramp, because it does get people to Boston Harbor, and we don't restrict who uses it. So from the state's perspective, this is a link to get a lot of people to Boston Harbor.
I've heard from the National Park Service that they see the Hingham Boat Ramp as a very important part of Boston Harbor. There are very few places where you can put in a public boat, you know, and park, you know, just, just a citizen. And they're, they're very aware of Hingham Harbor. So it's, it helps in terms of what we might do with the state.
Do we have any kind of a timeframe on this, at all?
They're, they're looking three years up right now for how the state is running. They're working on engineering right now.
But they did indicate it was subject to legislative funding. And I did put a call into Representative Bradley and asked him, and he did say he was going to work on seeing if he could help us with funding quicker.
It's not a little squeaky wheel one, it's, Ted's the right thing. We'll have to, you know, call occasionally, I mean...
More than one can call, by the way.
Correct.
Feel free.
As you know, I put it...
As you know, John.
Yeah, John, it's not a lot of this.
And I followed that bond bill very closely since last April. And this 4.5 million of it is designated strictly for the fishing game for sea coast sediment. And it only takes Edlin and Bradley to say, hey, there's four and a half million there, let's get it.
Just to be, technically, it takes a few more than just those two, but they have to start the process.
They've got a lobby for us.
But they actually have it even further than that.
Which I know they're doing.
Jack Shepard, who came down and met with us, indicated that they actually have Hingham's amount earmarked on their idea within that four and a half million. And they're ready to go.
Good.
And I regularly get calls from Representative Bradley, asking me if we have shovel-ready projects. So, we're ready. We have a shovel-ready project.
The last thing before I'll ask you on the goose management thing, is on the bathhouses, you're aware, the trustees department, RFP, I bet he probably worked with us very closely on that. And the genesis was, the existing building was a little too small. We got feedback from a couple of the respondents, that if we would allow them to build a bigger building in place of the beautiful concrete building we have here, that...
Very historic, charming and quaint.
Yeah, and early concrete bunker. That they would be very open to that concept. And the other issue was the, was the flood elevation. So the key would be to find, and we're trying to talk to the Conservation Commission and the Building Department, and say, where could we build, put this out, we put the RFP. And they were not deterred by the, of putting up a new building, you know? The people who run Sullivan's, for example, Castellano, it's the third building they've built themselves, that family has built there. So, and if anyone's ever gone to Castellano, that place terrates a lot of people. And I think they looked at that site with 20,000 cars a day, a traffic light in that parking lot. And it was just the limitations of the size of the building. They have an 880 square foot, square foot building, and they have to maintain a men's room and a room and a women's room, and have a functional snack stand, just wasn't their work. But I think if we gave them and other people a larger area, I think we can do it.
How much larger?
Our goal last year, as Ted, we remember, was we wanted to get it by August, we couldn't quite get it. If we can do that by August or September of this year, I think we've given them enough time to go through all the permits, if we can have it queued up with engineering and concrete.
What's the critical path to get it to August?
It's really going to be the flood eleva, we're going to wait for the FEMA elevation, unfortunately. Abby's kind of waiting for that to come back from them, so that's obviously the lynchpin or a number of things. But if you have that, I don't think the engineering is incredible. It's just going to be like, where do I put it? And you could even model the area up a little bit to get the building itself out of the flood elevation. I mean, slightly, we're up by maybe a foot.
So FEMA has 90 days to get their answers back to us. We submitted a second round of our information, as I indicated earlier, later in my report, to them last week. So 90 days from last week, if the clock starts from then, again, it's FEMA's rules, and the rules and regulations are a little vague, but it's 90 days from submission. So we're not sure if it's 90 days from the last submission, or from the first submission. They asked us for additional information. I have to put it in sometime in September.
Right.
Thank you. How much bigger?
My guess is probably about 400 feet, probably 400 or 500 feet. I don't think it'd be that large. You're probably looking at 1200 to 1300 square foot building.
Do you have the old picture of the bathhouse?
And I don't think Joan has it.
Of Tony Hauser.
We're going to try to make it look more, ideally, put it out, there was much more traffic built in there years ago, that I think Historic Districts would be more favorable. I mean, they're going to have to build something that's in keeping, because they have the Historic Districts available. And they're very open to the concept, as is the planning board, as far as, because they have the parking thing, but God knows if we have enough parking in that, it was, but they have not picked the building is. So it's a little bit of a catch-22 there. But that's my best guess, Paul.
With respect to the FEMA analysis, is that going to impact on the decisions with respect to the seawalls as well, depending on what the elevations come in at?
It could, sure, absolutely. Yeah, yeah. And probably should take that into consideration timing-wise, is that the ideal time to probably hire a consultant would be just about the time you have that, those elevations established, you know, to match it up. Good point.
Okay.
So I guess as Joan reminds me, can we have, is there a consensus from the Selectman on the goose issue, on raising a couple hundred dollars to...
Gentlemen?
Broaden the spraying area?
How much?
Spray away.
Spray away.
How much do, would you...
Wouldn't you think it would...
It was $350 to do our area.
And what is your figure in the area-wise? Is it comparable? Actually, if we went up to the Iron Horse, would it be a little larger?
So would you, would up to $1,000 be?
Always be way into that. It's probably not, up to is going to be more than enough.
Can we afford that? Can we, can we not afford? We have to do this.
I'm sure that we could manage up to 1,000, but then...
For a $100 million budget, we might find?
John's got the guy queued up to start at 6:30 tomorrow morning.
I had two and a half gallons in my car.
You guys are amazing. I mean, you have just been on this...
You haven't anticipated this.
For years.
I told John to hold off during the, can you wait until maybe like Wednesday morning?
Those goose are cooked.
Well, at least you didn't say you're leaving here and going to do it.
No, it's about nine hours from now.
Do you, excuse me, but what will I have him do about billing? Just bill it to me, we'll pay it, and then he'll...
Bill it to the Selectman's office?
No, actually, you're right. I mean, it's a bathing beach or harbor development, it better expenses than within that area, and then we'll take care of that.
Okay.
Did they bill you one side?
Yeah, but that's the trustees.
He's already billed me, but I'm talking about the...
The broader area.
Any comments?
I just want to make sure we're appropriating up to $1,000 to eradicate the geese.
Don't say eradicate the geese. We'll, we'll all get emails. Lots of emails. I'm amazed we have not gotten any comments. But that's because everybody can't believe there's no...
Except for Peter Face and the Goose Lady.
Yes, yeah.
Would you manage any goose droppings?
That, that would be good.
I would make a motion to appropriate up to $1,000 to manage goose droppings.
The treatment.
Along the harbor area.
Along the harbor area.
Do I dare ask, is there any more discussion?
Just, I want to say thank you so much to John Thomas, who's worked so hard on this for several years, and...
Yes.
He needed to have a point.
Just, John, you and Amy have turned up so many ways that people have, really, this has been a tireless...
Effort.
Effort, yes. Okay.
I do want to say one thing, is that standing water is not sprayed. So if anybody sees geese in the bathing beach parking lot, or the, over by the boat ramp...
He cannot, his luck, the rules of professional pesticide and sprayers is only green, green areas.
Okay.
So it won't be blacktop, there won't be the puddles in the blacktop, which the geese like to go to to drink, because it's fresh water.
In fact, a good argument when we get around to doing the bathing beach parking lot is to make sure we deal with that. If anybody has gone down by the farmer's market, when it rains, which we've got a lot of Friday rains, and then the Saturday, farmer's market, a lot of puddles. We've got to deal with that long-term.
That will be phase two, the next, when you all come to visit again.
Right.
Okay, with no further discussion, all in favor, aye. Any opposed?
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Awesome. What, oh, Amy's...
Oh, yeah.
Yep.
There's something else.
Are you all abandoning Amy?
Oh, no, we're just going to sit in the, we're going to sit in the audience and applaud.
It's just a prop. So, thank you. My name is Amy Cowan, and I'm with the community organization Friends of Hingham Harbor, and thank you for having us. So tonight, I am here with my other teammates, Mark Threl from the Rec Department, and Ken Corson from the Harbor Masters Office. And we'd like to talk to you about the potential of having a kayak and stand-up paddleboard rental program at the harbor. So we're very, very excited. This, as many of you know, has been talked about for probably two to three years. And we feel that this collaborative effort of all of our teams is putting forward the best plan for the town and for the community. So before we get into the background on what we're proposing, I want to just mention, and I'm sure it won't come to a surprise to anyone, but Friends of Hingham Harbor ourselves, it's the number one question we hear every summer, is when can we rent a kayak or stand-up paddleboard? And at the end of May this year, on a Thursday afternoon, we posted a quick question on a Facebook page, saying, is this something you'd be interested in? You know, tell us why, hoping we'd have 15, 20 comments to come. Well, within two hours of us, of posting that, we had over 150 responses of, it can't happen too soon. So I just want to make sure you guys understand how committed and excited the community is, and we hope we can move this forward. So with that, I'll jump into our initial plans, but Mark and Ken, please jump in when needed.
Well, why don't you join her?
All right.
Everybody's abandoning Amy.
That's all right. Okay, so, I'll start with our top three goals of the program. The first goal is to, and something close to all of us here, is to increase access to the harbor itself, for our entire community. So not just for people who want to kayak, but also people on the south shore of Hingham who's never been to the harbor, or hasn't been there for 30 years, give them another reason to come down. Our second goal is to create a self-sustaining program, which we will do. So there is not, we're not asking for any money from the Selectman's office today. And the third is to market Hingham as the beautiful coastal town that it is, and the healthy and happy lifestyle that we provide. So those are our three goals of the program. So overall, the program, it will be run by our amazing Rec Department. And with Ken's Harbor Master Office overseeing the safety aspects of it, and the operations of the harbor area itself. So with that, the Rec Department has agreed to invest the money on, for the equipment, as well as an employee that will be there during all operational hours. It'll be a Rec Department employee, but this person will also work very closely with Ken's team at the Harbor Masters Shed, so that he's familiar with the ways of the water, and he'll have a direct radio to Ken's team if he needs to access them. So, the, where it's going to be located is at Iron Horse Park. We're going to use the Harbor Masters Shed as the place where the employee will sit to accept the waivers, accept the payment, make sure they, the life jackets are fitted properly, hand out the safety whistles, and as well, talk about the potential flight, float plan, so we know where they're going and when they're coming back. The boats themselves will be stored on the dock. We have, or Ken has, an existing dock that we're going to modify. And there's a picture up there in the top right-hand corner, and that's a picture from Nantasket, I was going to say, Nantasket Kayaks. So we are not proposing that many kayaks, but it gives you a visual of what it might look like down at the dock. So that's the location. And we're going to start this year, hopefully, with three single kayaks, two double kayaks, and five, five stand-up paddleboards, and one paddleboat. And we'll get into why we're going to do that as well. We feel that the best way to move forward this year is to offer a passbook of tickets for $150. And that passbook will be equal to 10 individual two-hour rental periods. And the reason we want to do that is because it will help offset the initial startup costs. It'll allow us to really learn about peak hours, what are the demands, what is, what's the equipment that people want. It's going to allow us to gather information that perhaps we can adjust later if needed. So we do anticipate that there'll be interest in walk-up rentals. And we hope that later on down the road, we'd be able to do that. And I think with having a Rec employee there, we'd be able to do that. But this is very similar to how you guys already run your great programs. So most people in town, this would be familiar to them. With that said, though, this is something I'm really excited about, because our goal is to get as many people on the water as possible, we want to offer the paddleboat as a free service. So people can come down first, first come, first serve, for an hour, and enjoy the harbor on a paddleboat, if they don't want to invest in a 10 individual pass program. So, I'll just, I'll keep going. The ages we're recommending is that everyone under the age of 18 will have a waiver signed by their parents, and anyone under the age of 14 will be accompanied by an adult. So that's how we're moving forward with that. The hours of operation we'd like to start with are Thursdays from 3:00 to 7:00, to get that beautiful sunset, or start of. Friday, 3:00 to 7:00, Saturday, 10:00 to 6:00, and Sunday, 10:00 to 6:00, of course, weather permitting. But that also allows for Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, the Rec Department to develop any programs it would like to do, with classes or guided tours, et cetera. So that's how we'd like to start. And just to let you guys know, I think our friends at the Harbor Development Committee have put forward a supportive letter, as well as Joan, with the bathing beach trustees, which we really appreciate. And I have spoken with, or connected with Mary Savage about planning, as well as with Emily Wentworth in the zoning department. So we filled out an application, and we have our hearing date to get an A2 permit scheduled for June 30th. So, we were told that with your support, they don't anticipate a big problem, and we could be operational early July. So, do you guys want to add anything to that?
No, not other than the Rec Commission fully supports this program, and certainly willing to invest the seed money into getting this program up and running, and just like we do run all our other programs, keep it self-sufficient there, year after year. So with the support of the Selectmen, hoping to move it forward.
Kenny?
I think the concept is a great idea. I really think it supports the town's initiative to get people on the water, so I support it 100%.
And you're okay with the safety issues?
Yes, I'm all right with the safety issues. You know, once we get your approval, you know, we have some, some things to, to finish up, but I think those will be very simply taken care of, so.
What about the liability? Has that been addressed?
Do you want to talk to Ken?
So, the town accountant has looked into the liability issue. I believe that the liability policy would, would cost the town at least $500. The, the insurance company would like to see, you know, specifically what the supervision on the water will be for such a program. I have told Sue that until we get your approval, what I believe the supervision would be is when this program's in place, we'll have Harbor Masters on duty. They will be out on the waterfront. We won't be following the kayakers around, but we will be out there to assist them should that, should that need arise. And the Recreation Department will have a staff person that will be down there, will be trained in, you know, the basic paddlestrokes to give them instruction before they embark on their trip. And the Recreation Person will also be there to gather them when they come back. We'll know how long their voyage is going to be. We're going to understand where they're going, we'll have a flow plan. And if they don't return in a certain timeframe, we, we go with them as we would do any other kayaker that leaves us a flow plan. So I think that that type of a structure for supervision would be sufficient. I guess I could suggest, if you're, if you find this to be a desirable program, well, we could put a contingency on the fact that, you know, we get the proper liability insurance for the town that would meet Ted's, Ted's specifications, maybe.
Is that going to impact your staffing? Do you have enough staff to cover this?
I really don't see it impacting our staff. We have large numbers of kayakers that already enter our harbor. I don't see 10 more really having a big effect, 10 more kayaks. But any, any boater that goes onto the water could have an effect on the program, so I don't want to say it won't, but I don't see it being, being an issue for us to have to deal with.
Questions?
In terms of the permitting, who did you talk to in order to determine what kind of permit you needed here?
Emily Wentworth really helped me through that, and, as well as Mary Savage. So I believe at our hearing, we're going to ask them to waive the site inspection. They thought that would be...
Site plan review?
Yes, sorry, yes, please, site plan review, and then move forward for the A2 permit.
Was there any discussion with respect to an A3 permit?
No, she...
Speaks to parking?
Sorry. Well, she did say, we did the math, I'm sorry, Emily's the expert, not me, but she said we would require three parking spots based on the number of boats. And she put that in our application, and felt that, you know, based on the state parking lot, that it's not going to be an issue. So, it is something we're working through, and we'll talk about on the 30th, too.
Ken, is, is the kayak capable of having some kind of tracking device put on it, in case a boater gets lost? You can sing them in electronically and find them, or?
I guess we could do something like that. It might become cost prohibitive to put a tracking device on that. There are some other possibilities. We could potentially give them a VHF radio that they could use to, to call us if they need some assistance. So we're looking at a couple of different things that we could add, add to the safety package, should, should need be, but a tracking device might be, might be, might be cost prohibitive.
How many kayaks are on the water in the harbor presently, average?
On an, on an average week and day, we can have 50, 60 kayakers out there.
And, not being a boater, but it would suggest to me that the smallest craft has the right of way over the bigger one? Is that, am I wrong?
In the general sense, that's correct.
How's that working out? Is everybody playing in the sandbox nice, or?
It works out pretty good. Most of the kayakers stay out of the channels. A program like this, where the, the boats are going to be out for about two hours, they're really not going to be able to go very far. I'd be surprised if from the inner harbor, if they made it up to the Yawcliff and back in two hours. That's, that's a decent paddle for someone that's a novice. They're really not going to be going very far. So, prior to this program actually taking shape, whoever the Rec Person will be working down there with us, as well as my assistant Harbor Masters and myself, will all participate in a safety course. We'll have someone come in, that'll educate us all on the different paddlestrokes, and we'll actually go out and do a little bit of paddling to get a sense of how far these people will be going, and to give them some direction on, on courses.
Do you envision making a map?
Yes, I do envision making a map, and the, the Rec Person will be able to give them some guidance. But the inner harbor is pretty small, and like I said, to go to the Yawcliff and back would be, I think, a big paddle in two hours for, for a novice, so, you know, we'll have some...
They'll be so tired by the end.
Yeah, we'll have some guidance if they can get you on that. We'll have some guidance for them, but, but...
Is this something they can use at low tide? Not to ask a stupid question, but...
It's not stupid. Everyone would ask that. And I think because Ken came up with the great idea of launching from the dock, you feel that it's not an issue.
Yeah, they'll be able to access the water from the dock at all tides. They'll be restricted where they can paddle at low tide.
Obviously.
And they'll need the instruction, too, that when you go out there, it's going to be, tide's going to be dropping, you need to be cautious of the low tide. Otherwise, Otherwise, we get a lot of kayakers just getting stuck in the mud in there, they're pulling that boat through the... Quite a distance.
I just think it's a great idea, and thank you for, you know, thinking outside the box, so to speak, and listening to people in the community, what their, what their interests are. My concerns were safety and just maybe the ages of the kids that were using it, and what we had in place to monitor, all that, and you seemed to address that. Thank you.
Thank you. Ted, are you comfortable with?
I am. I'd just like to add that, you know, a private citizen came in with an idea with the Harbor Masters, and when I listened to it, I thought it was very interesting, as you did, but I kind of immediately jumped all the points that you did about liability and everything. Sue Nickerson jumped in and took care of the insurance, and I suggested to them that they meet with Mark Thorell and work with the recreation department, and I'm really just proud that they all worked very well together, pretty much did everything, and I very, had very little involvement. So, great work, and I think it's going to be a great addition if the board agrees, you know, for the community.
Long time in coming, Amy. But where is it? I hope the permitting goes well.
Well, we couldn't have done it without the rec and Ken, that's for sure.
I know. The rec is great. Rec rocks. Mr. Demko, do you want to?
I think it's a great concept.
You had to come up to the mic.
Oh, come on up. And introduce yourself.
We can't, the people on TV...
The unemployment policy would cover the liability. If you have a liability policy, it would affect them.
And that's, before you came in, that was addressed. Sue Nickerson is on it. That's, she says, I thought you wanted to sign up for the first kayak. Vicki, do you want to say anything?
I just quickly wanted to say, for those people who've lived in Hingham along...
Come up.
I don't know when it was, but this isn't really new to Hingham. Keos used to rent kayaks. We used to rent kayaks all the time down at the harbor. So it's great to have this program, and I'm thrilled that rec can get behind it and get it back started again. And thank goodness for Amy Cowan to bring the product to us so that we could get this done. But it was a wonderful, my husband and I used to rent them and go out all the time, and why give all the business to Nantasket when we can bring it right to Hingham, so?
And have the rec hopefully make a little money on it.
Great, thank you.
Amy, I thank you for your persistence in this.
Thanks, Sarah.
And thanks for another partnership with the rec, which is wonderful. Now, what do you need from us? Because I don't think we have...
Emily, all we need is approval to use the land, the space, and then, that's my understanding. And then Emily, the zoning group and the planning group will give us the permit to use the space how we like.
Do we need a motion?
I think you do, and I think it would just simply be a vote to authorize them to use the land and to proceed with the A3 application.
I'll make a motion that the board vote to act favorably on the request of the applicant to use town property, the pier, in accordance with the A2 permit that they intend to seek associated with that use. Second?
Any further discussion? Then pleasantly, all in favor. Thank you. Thank you all. Alan, anything else?
We, we owe you a letter...
Yes?
To put the issue of engineering work and some essential estimates on the...
I think that would be great, because that's another small step forward. Thank you very much, all of you.
Thank you.
Okay. David?
Yes?
Come hither.
Careful, Susan.
Geez, you've now, now got the place almost to yourself. First, I really want to thank you for the great job you've done on these policies.
Thank you.
I think you've done a superb job. Shall we go through them one at a time?
Can I just say that the, the process for the, all these policies, and I want to thank you for taking the time to look at so much reading material that I gave to you. I go out to different towns, and I ask for, you know, their policies. And so these are all kind of put together and cobbled together from different municipalities, different towns.
Super. Why don't we start with drug and alcohol first? And I had a couple general questions for you. For the people in the audience, would you explain the process of how all this happens, and this whole thing with the privacy issues? But who does the testing? Why so extensive changes in this? And then just the process that happens?
Sure. First of all, the, you had a drug and alcohol policy already in place. And that was for just safety-sensitive employees, which are the CDL drivers, the people at the DPW, people at the bus drivers for the school department. What I did was, I added a, a total package for the town, including our employees at Town Hall and everybody else. The difference between the two sections of the policies is that it's a, the policy for the safety-sensitive employees, they're, they're tested. It's random drug testing. The way that the employees are picked out to be tested is really good, because there's actual, no fear of targeting for individual employees. In other words, what happens is that we go to a, we have advantaged drug testing, do our testing, their enrollment, and they have a roster of our employees, and they pick the people to be randomly tested, which is good. It's a good way of doing it.
Is the, is the testing done every month, or every six months, or?
It's, it's, like I said, random, but it's mostly every three months. And that's maybe two or three employees.
And that's what you call safety-sensitive employees?
Yes.
I have no, no questions on this, thank you.
See, you did a good job.
Excellent.
Super. Any questions from the audience? Mr. Demko?
Request a random test of heroin on the mic.
Oh.
He's asking for who does the random test.
Actually, you all are going to come up next, I think. So move closer. We've all had our shots, we don't bite.
Ed Demko, Commissioner, who would do the random testing request?
The, all the supervisors, the superintendent have been trained. They're, they're actually certified in testing.
So if we have a crew that's on the sewer commission, it would be up to the supervisor?
Supervisor. Yep.
Dave, one last question.
Yeah.
I think I had it before. In terms of the drug testing, what if, are there any concerns about false positives?
Yeah, they'll always retest. So that takes away from the false.
Okay.
That's a simultaneous test?
Yes.
Okay. Good job on this one. Any more questions? All right. Who wants to make the motion?
I'll make a motion that the board vote to adopt the drug and alcohol testing policy as written.
Second?
Any further discussion? All in favor? Do you want to give us a little background on this one, David?
Yeah, it, it kind of protects our employees. It spells out what is expected of our employees, and it's a zero-tolerance policy for violence in the workplace. Pretty simple.
One question I had for you. Under the complaint, if an employee believes he's been, he or she has been subject to this, they're encouraged to report to any director, supervisor, manager, or the HR director. Why is it the HR director first?
Because it opens it up for more, they might not be comfortable with the individual that's reporting. So what happens is that they'll go to a supervisor, director, and then I get involved.
Paul?
No more questions.
Dave, just a quick question. It says violations that, any violations will be subject to appropriate discipline, up to and including termination. Who makes that determination?
That would be the appointing authority.
Which would be the selectmen for most employees, but, you know, the school committee for some, and, you know.
Yeah, it's a, the disciplinary process.
Does this apply to police and fire, too, that it would end up with us?
Yeah. Yes.
Another good job here.
Not fire. Well, actually, yeah, fire after 2014, or 15, because fire is reverting to you from the fire chief.
Hey, one other question. In terms of this, this policy, I think I may have asked it last time, and question one of the guests, is this something that, that needed to be bargained at all with the employees?
No.
And are there, are there penalties in place as part of collective bargaining relative to failing tests?
In, are you talking about the drug and alcohol, or?
Actually, well, actually both. But I mean, I was, I was thinking of the drug and alcohol, but if it applies to both, if you're found in violation, there...
In the drug and alcohol, yes, sir, it's in the DPW.
What about in the, the new policy for violence in the workplace?
It would be the process of disciplining. In other words, we have to investigate it and go through a whole disciplinary process.
The only reason I'm asking is, I think we said that board of selectmen, for the most part, would be the decision-making body or the appointing. I just didn't know, I'm sorry, if there was something that we need to be aware of down the line, that there's something in the contract that addresses that issue, as to what happens the first time, or if there is a first time, or a second time?
Yeah, generally, no. However, in the fire, fire department, there is. It's a, I mean, not the fire department, the DPW. It's a two-chance for the drug and alcohol.
And by the way, that's the same in the police superiors contract that we just negotiated.
Questions from the audience? Nothing? Who wants to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to move to adopt the workplace violence policy as written.
Second?
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Professional conduct, employee policy of professional conduct. This is logic. This is just how everybody wants to be treated. And we're putting it in writing to have it, for protection of the town and for protection of the employees.
Should give the board the example about the workers, the unemployment case, not getting the names?
No. We had a person that basically violated mostly everything that's on here. And we went through the whole process of, of the written verbal warnings, written warnings. We tried, tried the EAP, Employee Assistance Program, to help counsel her. Went to an unemployment hearing, and...
Ultimately terminated, I'm sorry to step in.
Terminated, yeah.
And then she, it was, the employee filed for unemployment.
Yeah. And I went to the unemployment hearing, and the hearing officer basically said, "You're totally correct in, in terminating this employee, no problem there. Can I see your written policy?" And didn't have a written policy, and she says, "Well, how do you know that it wasn't willful?"
So this is sort of, again, just boots, a belt and suspenders here, to make sure that, you know, that what we tell employees is, was written back to.
Will this be posted somewhere? I really think this is a sign-off, but will this be?
Yeah, in, in all departments. Also, what I'm going to do eventually is, I'm going to combine all of our policy, employee policies in one booklet, so it can be just handed out once a year, so that everybody's reminded of it and signs off on it. But the way that we have it now, we have just single policies that I have to have, like the anti-arrestment policy that I have to have it, and so, and that way it'll be easier to maintain.
Thank you.
Just maybe the same questions, and maybe the same answer. Discipline would be made out by the board of selectmen in most cases?
In most cases.
And it is no...
Well, ultimate discipline.
Progressive, is it progressive discipline?
It's progressive.
So if an employee is subject to this, they'll work with the, the HR department and the department head, and it might elevate to me. And then if it elevates to me and has to go further, then it has to go to you.
Is it an appeal process, or is it just a, is it, who determines where it goes?
For the non-union, the appeal process would be to Ted.
From the HR? It starts out with the...
Throughever, where, if it starts out through the HR, through the departments, ultimately it would come to me, and if they're unhappy, if they're unhappy with the department head decided to do something, they'll come to me, and if they're unhappy with how I did it, they're going to come to you.
Non-union, is that, is there a formal process to do that? I mean, is that...
It's, it's our, we follow progressive discipline. So it's, it's basically, you know, progressive discipline is, is verbal warnings, written warning, maybe day suspension, then goes to three-day suspension, and then it'll go to Ted, if it continues.
Does it, does it depend on the severity of the, so in other words, you may not get a one-day suspension. If it was that bad, you may go directly to Ted, to the board of selectmen?
Correct, correct.
And who determines that?
That would be between myself, the supervisor, the department head, and Ted.
Okay.
Excellent. Paul?
Nothing.
Excellent. Any questions from the audience? All right, I'll take a motion.
I'll move that we adopt the employee code of professional conduct as written.
Second?
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Last.
Last, but not least?
Since we have an employee code of professional conduct, we thought that we might put in a visitor's code of conduct. And one thing that I'd like to bring your attention to, Paul Healy contacted me and wanted me to add an extra bullet point. It's down the end. "There shall be no unattended bags, backpacks, or parcels allowed within or on Town Hall grounds," which makes all sense in the world. I'd also like to add to that and include the following. "Any such items shall be subject to search." I think that's a basic safety precaution in today's world. I mean, we're a year out of a bombing that maimed hundreds and killed several of our citizens. So I just don't think we can afford to be casual.
And my, my only concern with that, I know Paul's bringing it up tonight, and it's a good point, believe me, but I just am a little, not sure I feel 100% comfortable with searching property per se, so I just, you know, I mean, I, not that I disagree with...
Caution.
I have a little caution there, so...
I think what, what would happen is that naturally, we'd, we'd call the police.
Right.
And the police would be, would decide whether to search or not, so.
Would that also talk under the employee code of business conduct?
Hmm...
Your, your things should be in your possession?
I know, but that's going to be really hard for bags and stuff.
So just on that, so Paul, does it make sense to, to indicate that, that the search may be conducted by the police?
Oh, I have no problem with who, who does the search. I just think it's got to be done if, say, we're sitting here, and there's a crowd, somebody leaves, there's a big backpack, nobody's claiming ownership of it. Call downstairs, the PO comes up, takes it out, makes a threshold assessment, and if there's an additional step that needs to be ta, I mean, if the person's name is outside on the tag, you call them, "Hey, is this your backpack?" But, you know...
I'm just very comfortable with it, as long as, I think, we contact the police in that area, and I just didn't want to do, no problem.
I'll put that in.
Subject to a blanket search, because then I just, I...
And you know what? I don't want... Because I would want to be, as a town administrator, I wouldn't want anybody in the building to think they could search anybody who walks in the door. So I'd rather have it protocolled out.
And we're not trained.
Subject to search by the police.
Right.
Something...
Right.
You're right.
So can you...
I'll put that in, yeah.
Okay.
And do it as modified.
This one, my questions were, where's it going to be posted?
I would think it would be the department heads' decision where to put it in their departments.
I think, I think we're going to have to talk about putting this in the building and specific locations.
Downstairs?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
By the entrance?
And I think it's by the entrances.
Yeah.
Where do other towns post this?
It varies.
Varies, okay. Who, going along with, I think we started the conversation last week, who enforces this? And how, what's the progress for the enforcement when somebody, some people do get loud. I've been yelled at a lot. They don't mean it.
There's, there's not a lot of enforcement here?
The way enforcement would work would be, anybody affected by the policy that feels they've been affected by the policy would report to the department head, or to my office, or to David. And, and then we would take appropriate steps, you know, if, and it indicates repeated violations may result in permanent suspension. If, if, personally, if someone came to me and said they felt they were involved with a visitor who violated the code of conduct, I'd probably send them a letter and just ask them to, you know, monitor their conduct in the building and leave it at that. For me, I think, you know, and when we met with council to talk about some of these issues, they indicated that, you know, this is a public building, and people have the right to free speech and access this building. We need to be extremely careful about that. But on the other side, you're also the employer of 100 people working in this building that also have the right to feel safe in their environment and work in their environment. So we're trying to balance those two things together. And, you know, I think we would send letters, and if we felt that the letters weren't having effect, and we were going to consider some type of a ban, then we would come to the board of selectmen, and we would ask you if we could file the appropriate action. And that would include action in Hingham District Court, according to council. And we would have to have established this record that, you know, you've been asked repeatedly to not, you know, violate the code of conduct.
Let's hope, let's hope we never have to do that.
The way I look at this is that it's, it's a tool for the employees to have, that they can actually have this and place it in front of the person who's doing any of this and say, "You're not supposed to do that," you know.
For the record, and I will pass this to be attached to the minutes, Tom Patch did send in comments. We did ask for comments from the public, and we got Tom's comments on this particular policy. And it revolves around freedom of speech, which Mr. Healy brought up the last time we looked at this. So we'll put this as an attachment or a document that will go with the minutes. And it's very well done.
One other quick comment. I just want to thank David and all those that were, you know, put these policies together. And I think, just from my perspective, it's a good start. And I think, you know, down the line, as we, as experienced teachers, we'll probably have to make some adjustments.
Yeah. All of them, they get changed all the time. And it goes by, you know, mass general laws. And can I just add one more thing? When we were talking about the danger of the backpacks and whatnot, John Norquaidus, Lieutenant Norquaidus, and Deputy Chief Bob Olson are actually working with us in the building and the library and the other buildings.
Bob Olson?
No, Bob Olson.
Okay.
Deputy Fire Chief.
Okay.
Yeah. And, and John Norquaidus from the police, on police side. And Linda Harper and Dennis Corcoran actually put together an amazing employee emergency procedure. It's about this thick. All the employees were concerned. Were very concerned about, you know, what's happening in the world today. And what, we don't have anything in place for us to evacuate the building or whatever. So that's being worked on next.
Excellent.
So what we will be doing is Lieutenant Norquaidus, he is in charge of the first pertus and shooter drills, and the fire department, and the police department runs. We'll be running this program, not the exact same program that the whole police department goes through, but we'll be running a tip, a program like that to vet our security features in all of our facilities, DPW, town hall, library, to ensure that the people who work in the building do understand what's available to them and what to do in the case of an emergency. Because what John has told us is that that preparation has greatly helped people in, you know, the situations when it gets dire.
And the way we're doing this is, is we're, we're starting with John Norquaidus going to each department and actually finding out, you know, looking at the layout and talking to the, to the employees, what's your concerns, so.
I propose that, under the expected conduct portion of this, the third bullet, it says, "Respect the personal space of others." I think that it should be made more explicit. And by that, I mean, I think if you're coming into the town hall to do business, you go into the clerk's office, you go to the counter. You're coming into the building department, get a building permit, you go to the counter. You don't open the door and go into the office unless you're invited. And, and I think that that should be stated. It may seem like common sense, but I think that intruding into the employees' personal workspaces when there's a public counter can be an unsettling event. And I think that that is just an explicit statement of conforming behavior. I don't think that that intrudes on, you know, the right of the citizen to access the public government, and it enhances the safety expectations of the people working in this building.
It is the single largest consistent complaint we hear from employees in this building, that people come into their offices and, you know, they walk around the desk, onto their side of the desk, or close the door, walk in. Some, some people have come into an office and, I think this is not a administrator, but come in and close the door. You know, and that's just, makes people feel uncomfortable.
Yeah, we've, it's, it has happened.
And you'd think if you ask to not do it, it would stop, but it doesn't. It happens the next week.
We've had a call of police. There's been a department head call of police to remove an individual that refused to.
And by the way, we involve the police department in the development of these policies with town council.
Good. And the police were okay with all this? Excellent.
It just, one final point. I hate to belabor it all, but do not engage in any lewd or offensive behavior. I think we should have the word language in there. Because of, I mean, we've imposed, I think, that standard of conduct upon the employees. But I think that the employees are entitled not to be sworn at or spoken to pejoratively by somebody who's disgruntled. It's.
Don't you think offensive behavior covers that?
I think offensive behavior is a broader category, but I think adding the word language just makes it clear that, hey, you know, if you want to behave like a, you know.
Yeah, I have no problem with that. That makes all the sense in the world. It specifies. It's fine.
What do you think?
Well, I mean, I, I mean, I don't have any strong feelings. I think it does cover it, but I mean, if it, if it helps to put a few more words in there, I don't know. I just, I just make sure. I just want to know what the final package looks like before we vote on it, so.
All right. So this one should we hold until David adds some things? We can do that. That's not a problem.
Point of information, if a department has a meeting, and somebody comes into the meeting and uses discriminatory, accused another department member, would this come under what you're talking about? We had this happen at a meeting we had recently.
Ed, there's a, there's actually a policy out there that was adopted by, by the selectman a while ago. That's, it's a code of committee behavior.
But I think Ed is referring to a private citizen coming to a board or committee and speaking derogatively to the board or to the department heads.
I think that's in that.
I can cover that area in two ways, Ed. One.
That would be here.
As a board, you're not allowed to allow, and since you are a board with hiring authority, you're not allowed to have, and the board of selectmen have the same constraint, not allowed to have a conversation about the performance of an employee who works under you, who is part of your hiring authority, without notifying the employee 48 hours in advance, and giving the employee the right to have that conversation in executive session or in the public session. So when a citizen comes up to the mic and starts discussing an employee's performance or conduct, then what's inadvertently happening is the town, as the employer unit, is getting put into a liability situation, according to our labor council, where the employee could charge that the board itself allowed that activity as a way to violate the employee's 48-hour rate. So, you know, when you, when you sit on a board, you have certain powers and authorities, and one of them is, is that. You need to exercise that authority to stop that kind of conversation immediately, because you put the town at risk. In terms of them attacking the board, while there's actually no, you know, legal procedure to stop that, these codes of conduct start doing that. Of course, as a board member, you're always entitled to maintain decorum on the board in the meeting. And if you're running a meeting and someone is being belligerent or disruptive, you're entitled to ask them to leave or have them removed.
This was at a meeting, an individual who was accusing somebody else on another board of not acting properly.
So that would be two elected officials going at each other?
No, no.
I'm not sure I can do anything about that.
Saw the meeting that he's referring to. I saw the meeting.
You saw the meeting?
Yeah, I did.
Is this the one the other night? Okay, I think, I think we all saw it too.
So I think mostly with employees, that's the procedure to go, go through.
So David, if you could have this one updated, and we'll, we'll do this one at the next meeting.
Happy to do it. Thank you all very much.
Thank you for the great work. It's a lot of work. These things are not easy. Discussion on liquor license fees, this will be very quick. You guys can come on up while we do this. We said last year that we would review by the end of June, the all-alcoholic, did I get this one right, there's only 27 to pick from, the all-alcoholic licenses and the fees that we charge. We took a huge jump last year, but we did kind of stagger it protecting the smaller restaurants, which we all dearly love, and they're, we don't have as many as we used to. So this being very close to the end of June, we taking a look again, and I would ask my colleagues, and then I'll chime in, but.
Okay. Well, I wasn't here, if it was last year, if I understand it, when the rates were, were changed. And, and I understand there may have been some thought about revisiting it this year, which I think was a good idea. But at this point, understanding what I do about where we've been proceeding in terms of charging licensing fees and also allocating tax revenues in certain directions, I am not in favor of increasing any licensing fees for the establishments at this time.
Paul?
I wasn't aware that we were going to be looking to increase them. We've worked now for a year under this new scheme. I thought it was rationally thought out, and Sharon, she's not here, but she did a great job laying it all out. It seems to be working. I see no reason not to continue it as it's currently structured.
And I absolutely concur with my colleagues. We'll revisit it annually, and by the end of June of every year, we'll make some kind of decision so that the people can plan. Because that was the other thing last year. We kind of hit people towards the end of their year, and they couldn't really plan. So we said we would make the decision every June. So it's done. We're doing nothing. Do we need to, we don't need to take a vote on that. Okay. Gentlemen, join us. Sewer consolidation agreement discussion. And introduce yourselves.
Eric Gondavere.
Commissioner Red Demko.
And Eric, welcome. This is your first appearance.
Yes.
First of many good ones, I hope. Ted, do you want to lead the discussion, or?
Sure. The town, the board of selectmen and the sewer commission entered into an agreement approximately three years ago to manage the day-to-day operations of the sewer department. We've been operating under that agreement. That agreement expires on June 30th. The meeting, several last two meetings, the sewer commission has brought the issue up and has been unable to come to a vote on it. And so I think we're here to discuss it. In six days, the agreement terminates, and we need to think about what's going to transpire.
I would ask that, I'm new to the commission, and I've been working on going over that consolidation agreement, and I would ask that if we could extend it for 30 days so that I could finalize that, to my uncertainties, that would be a great help.
I think that's a very smart and prudent thing to do, that you actually know what you're going to sign.
Thank you very much.
So I don't have any, and welcome to the commission. I would certainly support that. Ed, and then last one.
I would concur with Commissioner Gondavere on that.
Excellent. Gentlemen?
Thank you. Congratulations, Eric.
Thank you.
Good to see you. Commissioner Demko, good to see you as well. So what I would just ask, that if, between now and 30 days, if you folks have any concerns, that you would let me know, so I could maybe, you know, better participate in the next meeting in terms of what I have to focus on. So I'm certainly happy to talk to you at any time. What your concerns are, you know, suggestions, proposals, okay?
We'd take that into consideration.
Me too.
Thank you.
Me too.
Thank you very much.
Paul?
How long have you had the agreement to consider?
Excuse me?
How long have you had this agreement to consider?
I think I've been on for three months. I think I've had it, I didn't.
Three, three weeks.
A month and a half, a month and a half.
Okay.
See, time flies, Eric.
So three weeks.
Okay. And the agreement's been in effect for three years, or is that right, Ed?
Yeah. It comes up every three years.
Is this the first time it's being renewed, or?
Yes.
And are we able to sign something that would keep the present conditions in place with respect to continuing this for a month?
Can't we just vote it? Or do, or do nothing?
Are you posted for tonight?
What's that?
Are you posted for tonight?
Yeah, I think so, yeah.
Well, if you're posted, then you can vote right now, along with the selectmen, to continue the existing agreement for 30 days. If you're not posted, then you can't vote.
But we could.
You could, and then you have till June 30th to file a meeting, I'm not sure you're posted, to file a meeting and, you know, duly public meeting, and vote to extend it for 30 days.
That would be my concern, gentlemen, that.
We're posted, you know.
We're on the agenda, Ted?
Well, you're on our agenda, but unless, unless Liz posted you for tonight, I'm not sure if you were posted. So you might actually not be able to conduct business. You guys can. So you don't have to do it tonight. You can just, you know, you got 48 hours to make a posting. You know, you just tell Liz tomorrow to post a meeting in 48 hours, or whenever you guys can fit your schedule between now and June 30th, which doesn't give you a lot of time, probably have to be Monday. And just, I'll have the agreement drawn up. It's just to, to extend the existing agreement for 30 days.
Eric, I have to recognize you, that you're doing something, I think, very much in a leadership that you are wanting to, and this is a complex agreement, if you've never done this. And it's written by legal people, which you sit there and go, "What do they really mean?" So I want to really commend you for saying, "I need time."
Thank you.
My concern is that, that the, the terms that, under which the sewer operations of the town are conducted are not left open for a 30-day period, though. That's, I'm fine with giving you a little more reading time if that's what you need, but I want to do it in such a way that the town's protected in terms of the agreement between the sewer commission and us.
And I would just add one last thing is that, you know, not only do I want you to be comfortable, but I want you to be comfortable with us, and that whatever you guys agree to is something that you guys are happy with. I mean, I know that there may be issues that pop up from the, the last agreement, and, and, you know, my, my hope is that we can try to resolve any issues we have in, in the 30-day period, and you come up with something everybody's happy with.
Excellent.
There's, there's some new, new sections to the agreement anyway, that have been put in, that weren't there before, so it takes a little time to resolve it, you know.
Good. We've got the time now.
I would just ask, is there anything you guys need from our office or from Randy to look at this for your review for 30 days?
I don't think so.
CG, do you want to make a motion that we continue?
I'll make a motion to continue the existing consolidation agreement with the sewer commission and DPW for an extended period of 30 days.
Provided that the sewer commission takes a similar vote in a duly posted meeting, council?
Well, obviously, for, I mean, just, my understanding is if, if they don't vote it, then it doesn't get extended. I'm not sure I can force them to. I think, I think that the understanding is that we're both going to do it, but if you want to make an amendment to it and.
Yeah, actually, Paul, if they don't sign it, then it doesn't be, it's not an agreement.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what I figured, so.
All right.
So add your, the motion as amended.
Sure. I'll second it.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Gentlemen, thank you. Gentlemen, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, guys.
Guys, have a nice night now.
You, too. You, too. Okay. We're going to have a brief, since we're running over, but the harbor development discussion, I think, was well worth it. And if we're gooseless for the fireworks, it was really well worth it. Not that we don't like geese. We're going to just have a brief, and I'll let Ted lead this off, on goals and objectives.
Sure. So now we're in the goals and objective setting process, and what I would recommend to the board, that, you know, tonight was, I hope, to be a kickoff of how are you going to come to your goals and objectives? And I would recommend that the board consider doing this over at least a couple meetings, and one of those meetings to try to have it, and I know it'll be difficult for a couple of you, to try to have it during the day, if possible, so we can invite all the department heads in, and they can hear what you guys, what your, what your view and goals are for the year, and how it meshes with the things that you've asked them to do. We've done that in the past, and it's worked really well. Haven't done it in quite a few years, but it has worked-
I was going to say, wow.
It has worked well in the past, and the department heads really appreciate hearing directly from you, you know, what you're thinking about certain issues. And so that would be my recommendation, that you each come up with some ideas. Try to remember that, you know, one of the goals I would hope would be to continue the outstanding operation of the town, which in itself is a fairly substantial issue. So these are things that, you know, tend to be above and beyond what we do on our ordinary course.
Sure, and I would just say that I would hope that the department heads felt comfortable enough that they could approach us if they had anything that they thought was a priority or a goal, because obviously it would, it would help facilitate a discussion, a better discussion at that meeting, I would think. If they, if they can feel free to come to us and say, hey, this is what I think is important-
That's an excellent point.
I think that'd be great. I would super, and also, we'd invite the public. Use the selectman email. If you have an idea of a goal or objective that the selectmen should have, please let us know what it is, and we'll take a look at it and talk about it. We have a number of appointments.
Okay.
How do we, how can we do this as quickly as possible?
Do we have to publicly state all of them?
Yes.
Or just incorporate it into?
Can we just do one vote?
You actually don't have too many.
No?
One, two.
Well, we added one.
Oh, wait, no, there's multiple in each one. I think for the record, you actually have to vote them.
So if we just read all of these?
Yeah.
Can we take one vote?
Yes.
And then add Mark Minor?
Sure, sure.
Okay, do you want to read?
Yeah.
You got the light, right glasses on?
I'll read. I got the glasses. I'll make a motion that we vote to reappoint the following. Ellen M. Kearney, David W. Anderson, Mario Romania Jr., and Robin S. McGuire as associate members of the zoning board of appeals for a one-year term expiring June 30th, 2015. Joan Iovino, Gretchen Condon, Richard Ponte to the council on aging for a three-year term expiring June 30th, 2017. Margaret Taylor to the beautification commission for a three-year term expiring June 30th, 2017. Robert Smalldon to the Bear Cove Park Committee for a three-year term expiring June 30th, 2017. Kathleen Peters to the community preservation committee as the board of selectmen's appointment for a three-year term expiring June 30th, 2017. Robert F. Beal Jr. to the trustees of the Grand Dominee of the Republic Hall for a three-year term expiring June 30th, 2017. Patrick Goggan and Albert Rodiger to the board of managers of Lincoln Apartments LLC for a three-year term expiring June 30th, 2017. Maureen Domena to the veterans council for a three-year term expiring June 30th, 2017. Don Seabor as a register of the town of Hingham for a three-year term expiring June 30th, 2017. Mark Minor as a regular member of the historic districts commission for a three-year term expiring June 30th, 2017.
And one more, right above it.
And a vote to appoint Elizabeth A. Eldridge as a trustee of the Hingham Public Library for a three-year term expiring June 30th, 2017.
Well done. Well done. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Now, we have for the first Fridays for Hingham Square, a vote on that, and Betty, I think you have the information to convey.
In your folder, you have a, an email from the downtown merchants association, and they're requesting Friday, July 11th, Friday, August 1st, September 5th, and October 3rd for outside displays of merchandise in the square for their first Friday celebrations. They understand that they have to have a minimum of 48-inch-wide sidewalks exclusive of the display, so that people can get by easily in the square, and that everything has to go in that night.
And not come out again? Because we've had that problem in the past.
Mm-hmm.
Only on Fridays.
Correct.
Only on Fridays from, I believe it's 5:00 to 7:00.
It's only two hours, but in the past, we've had people who have, how shall I say, forgotten to bring everything in. So I think this is a great idea. Hopefully, it's going to bring more people to the square and help their businesses. So, any comment, Paul? Sure.
I just want to incorporate the email with the proposal of the parameter displays referenced by Mr. Stack, unless you want to do it.
I don't have it in front of me. I didn't-
Right here.
I'll make a motion that we approve the special outside displays of merchandise in Hingham Square for first Friday events on July 11th, August 1st, September 5th, and October 3rd, 2014, from 5:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m., incorporating the display parameters referenced in the email dated Friday, June 20th, 2014, from Michael Stack to Betty Foley and Mary Savage Dunn.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. None opposed? Okay, what else we've got? Want to do the one with the assessors?
Sure. I move to sign the management agreement between the Town of Hingham Board of Selectmen and the Town of Hingham Board of Assessors effective July 1, 2014, and continuing for a period of three fiscal years.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? What else do we, oh, town manager, town manager, town administrator reports, and selectman reports?
Sure, I have a couple of things for you, to include in your packet. I was pleasantly made aware that our own Keith German was presented with the Veteran's Services Officer of the Year award at the annual VSO Summer Conference on June 18th. The award is presented in recognition for his outstanding performance as the director of Veteran's Services for the towns of Hingham and Cohasset, and the top honor is awarded annually to the most deserving veteran services provider in the Commonwealth, and he was awarded by his peers, so even, even better, his fellow workers recognize what we all know. On June 6th, Peter Williams of GZA submitted to FEMA the additional information they had requested on our filing to amend the flood plan maps, and that's, we believe that's going to be the final kickoff of the 90 days. We don't think the original submission date is what, but we're trying to confirm that, because that's really going to bump us up to the October time period, and, you know, part of our argument with FEMA was, you know, we gave this to you a couple of months ago, you know, really, that should be the kick of the 90 days, but. The Veterans Office is continuing to work with Aquarian to address an issue. I know some of you have mentioned this to me, but several search engines and websites are listing the Veterans Office. When they do a search for Aquarian, it comes up as 1-440, the Veterans Office, and it's inundating them with calls. Aquarian's been helpful, as best they can be, but, you know, as big as Aquarian is, Google and Yahoo even bigger and harder to get through, and they're working for it. But our IT department is going to deploy a temporary solution, and we ask that people have patience. This is not our problem, but we're trying to solve it, and our priority, of course, is keeping those lines open for the veterans that, that call in. Sometimes people call us, and they're citizens of the town, because they're looking for Aquarian, they find out they got the Veterans Office, we can't transfer them because it's out of the building, and we've all done that. We've called someone, the wrong person maybe, and they can't transfer us to the right person, and people get aggravated. And so Lisa's done a great job down there trying to maintain some, some calmness. And our road construction projects, which I'll update you on every meeting, Fort Hill Street is ongoing, and Union Street is, is starting up, and it'll be running through July 4th weekend.
You, too.
Sure.
Paul? I think, I think Paul.
Yeah, I, I know you and I both went to Sturbridge, so you're going to do Sturbridge, but I wanted to just-
We'll do it together.
Okay.
The book is heavy. You can hold the book up.
Mr. Ponti, can you like zoom that bit?
This is our version of Vanna White.
He's asleep. Nope, there he is. Went out to Sturbridge Village Saturday. It's $5 to get in. Great deal. I have to say, that bucket exhibit was outstanding. My hat's off to everyone who put that together. The historical society I could see was at work there. I also went down to West Haven in Connecticut, and, the historical commission, excuse me, but I thought I saw the society in there, too.
Suzanne was there.
Yes. And I had the pleasure of looking at The Lone Sailor beautifully displayed in a park, public park with benches. It was just a great, great visage. So I sent that picture along to a few people. Traveling back up to Massachusetts, stopped in Manchester, Connecticut, and saw a great monument to the soldiers who fought in Cuba. Little ideas for our ongoing effort to honor Seaman Foss. And lastly, this Saturday night, while all you guys are out at the harbor, is it the fireworks?
Yes.
I'm going to be at the country club with my wife, celebrating 40th high school reunion, class of 1974, so have a good time, and thanks very much. All right, that's all I have.
Thanks. Picking up on the Bucket Town exhibit, Andrea Young, old Sturbridge Village. Soothby is one of the sponsors, which tells you what kind of class this exhibit is. It's, it's an amazing exhibit. There's over 180 items in the exhibit, and they're so well done. Peter Hershey has spent basically seven years of his life making this happen. Darren Bray is the author of the book. He was there. We also got, and absolutely, there we go. Bob, get another picture.
There you go.
Hopefully, people will like the book. We've got copies for sale, this is the big we down at the historical commission.
Buy the book.
Buy the book. Mary Ellen Dever is here, and her order is buy the book. The library has a copy that you can check out at some point, and if you like it, then come and buy a copy.
They have a website, too.
They were flying off the shelf at Sturbridge. Tally and I went to the opening reception Friday night, and it was truly amazing. It really was. Lots and lots of Hingham people there, and then Saturday for the $5, and it was a one-day only, but it was declared Hingham Day, so everybody who could show residence at Hingham got in for $5, and it was fabulous. And the weather totally cooperated. Also want to thank everyone who attended the SNAP fundraiser Friday night at the country club, and that's the Special Needs Athletic Partnership. They raised over $9,000 for the summer program, and the Hingham Hull Rotary Club made a significant donation to that, and we're ever grateful for them for doing that. We want to thank everybody that was involved in putting that fundraiser together. So thank you all. And the Fourth of July Parade Committee is still looking for money. They have a 50-flag campaign going now. If you go up on the website, you can sign up for it, and all the flags that you see around town, where you see about 50 at a time, that's in support of the Fourth of July Parade Committee. That's all I have.
Executive session.
I know. Taking a breath to read this.
Okay.
We're going to be adjourning to executive session, so make a motion to executive session to discuss strategy with regard to real estate negotiations with, one, Hingham Mutual, and, two, Boston Golf, since discussion of these matters in open session could be detrimental